Good evening and welcome to the special meeting on Wednesday, May 8th at 8:00 PM. All rise and please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado, President.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Potem Wu.
Yeah.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please tell us how this is going tonight?
Right, thank you for the time. So, as the public is aware, the City Council voted last week to provide Larry Whithorn the option to address the City Council at closed session at 7:00 PM this evening. After providing Larry Whithorn the opportunity to address the City Council, the City Council voted 5 to 0 to uphold the interim city manager's determination to terminate the employment relationship with Mr. Whithorn. And then, now I'd like to describe this evening what will be occurring this evening. So, tonight is a non-evidentiary hearing. This is an opportunity for Mark Taylor to exercise his rights to address the City Council and an opportunity for the Council to listen. I have advised both the City Council and City staff that because this is an ongoing personnel matter, that they should not respond to any public comments or to ask or answer any questions. Rather, this is a chance to listen. After hearing from the public and from Mr. Taylor, the City Council will be asked to vote on whether to uphold the determination of the interim city manager to terminate the employment relationship with Mark Taylor.
Okay, before we begin, I want to change it just a little bit. I know public comment usually comes first, but I was asked today by Mark Taylor himself if he could go first and state, and I, do I have any objections from the Council? Not seeing any, then. Mark, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City staff and the public. As you know, I am here tonight to exercise my right to a hearing due to being terminated from my position as Police Chief. I would first like to thank the entire Council for allowing me to continue this hearing to tonight. I asked for this continuance because I was given two days' notice that my hearing was scheduled for last Tuesday and did not feel this was enough time to adequately prepare. While I have the right to have an attorney present tonight, I have chosen not to exercise that right. I was told that this is a Skelly-like hearing, but I would dispute that and offer this is nothing like a Skelly hearing. In a Skelly hearing, there is an investigation, a notice of intent to discipline, and while the employee is still employed, the Skelling hearing is conducted. In this case, I was terminated, a job flyer was created and sent out for the interim Police Chief position, and the City announced the termination to the media which was printed. I would like to be very clear that my comments tonight are not a result of sour grapes or being a disgruntled employee. They are only intended to ensure the Council and the public understand the truth. The truth is not very flattering. The incidents leading up to and concluding with my termination, along with other city employees, are based on retaliation and corruption and for no other reason. First, I would like to read the termination letter that was written by the interim city manager and presented to me on April 22nd, 2019. Dear Chief Taylor, as you know, I have recently been appointed to the position of the city manager for the city of West Covina. With this new administration to the city, there are several changes I have to make to ensure my vision for the city is executed. This unfortunately has required me to make tough personnel decisions. As such, I am making the decision that we are going to seek new leadership in your position. This letter will serve as Government Code Section 3304(c) Notice of Termination. The termination is affected immediately. As required by the Public Safety Officer's procedural bill of rights, you have a right to an appeal to the City Council regarding my decision. The appeal is non-evidentiary. If you choose to exercise your right to an appeal, please notify my office of your intent by April 25th, 2019. Despite this unfortunate circumstance, I would like to express my sincerest appreciation for your commitment and service to the city of West Covina. I wish you luck in your future endeavors. Sincerely, David Carmini, Interim City Manager. His appointment was for the interim city manager position, not the city manager stated in the letter. Does this suggest he has already been promised the full-time position? I would like to walk you through several of the many events which I believe played a role in my termination. In February, March of 2018, the city manager told all department heads we had to cut 10% from each department's budget due to an approximate $8 million initial city deficit. This 10% cut to the Police Department represented 3.1 million, and a daunting task. This cut is the largest cut to the Police Department at one time in at least the last 35 years. I formulated a plan which would meet this mandate but also reduce services to the community. Implementing this plan also meant that no Police Department employee, either full or part-time, would be laid off. These cuts included losing six vacant police officer positions, cutting investigative resources and department training, and modifying the department's patrol deployment to reduce overtime. The patrol deployment model was created in 1989 when the department had 115 police officers and at one point the department had 127 officers. Today, there are 99 positions. With between 16 to 28 less officers, there was no way to maintain the existing patrol model without using significant overtime. I made it very clear in both closed and open session that these cuts would affect the level of service to the community and at certain times of the day would not guarantee there would be the same number of officers on the street. I think it is important to note that when the overlap shift was discontinued, no officers were taken off the street. They were moved to other patrol shifts and kept on patrol. The elimination of the overlap shift was estimated to save approximately $900,000 in reduced overtime. There is no one in the Police Department that was more irritated by these cuts than I was. Both as a Police Chief and a resident, I was concerned for the safety of the officers and the public. Unfortunately, like it or not, we can only provide the police services to the community that the city can afford. As a reminder, all of these cuts were approved by the city manager and the then-city council on a 3-2 vote. These cuts to the Police Department's budget increase the frustration of the members of the Police Association who have not had a new contract in over four years. I knew these cuts to the Police Department's budget would be terribly unpopular with the rank and file. I also knew that our residents would be justifiably concerned about the negative consequences of these public safety cuts if they fully understood them. It would have been an easy and popular thing for me to do, to go to the Police Association and the community and blame the Council for authorizing these cuts or for financial mismanagement. It is ironic that I am now paying for deciding to handle these mandated cuts professionally. When the Police and Fire Associations became upset over these cuts, a current city council member went directly to the city manager and told him that he needed to fire both the Police and Fire Chiefs. The city manager refused to do this. This is the same city council member that met with me previously and told me that he wanted me to issue concealed carry gun permits. I told him I was going to continue with the existing policy of having the Los Angeles County Sheriffs review all of the applications as it was my decision, not the city councils or city managers. This clearly angered him. Over the past year, a current city commissioner complained and stated on an open public Facebook page numerous times that the upper management and Police Chief needed to be removed. When I was notified of this, I brought this to the attention of the city manager because I believed that being a paid commissioner employed by the city, his employment precluded him from being able to create a hostile working environment. The city manager said he would talk to the council member that appointed the commissioner. Shortly thereafter, the city manager told me the commissioner had been spoken to and asked not to continue with his comments. It should be noted that there is a written code of conduct and decorum for city commissioners that prohibit this conduct. Almost immediately after this conversation, the postings continued to include comments about pending police litigation. Two police employees filed grievances against the commissioner, who is a close personal friend of at least two current city council members. Upon receipt of the grievances, I concurred with them and joined with the employees. On January 3rd, 2019, I contacted the HR director and forwarded the grievances and my concurrence to him and CC'd the city manager in the email that was sent. Both the HR director and the city manager concurred with these grievances and assured us they would be investigated. The HR director then sent these grievances to the city attorney. The city has a five-step grievance policy in which short time limits are attached to each step. All of these time limits at every step have been ignored and stalled, which interferes with the employee's due process rights. Finally, last Tuesday, I received an email from an outside investigator wanting to meet with me to discuss the investigation. Last Tuesday was 118 days after the first grievances were submitted to the HR director and the city manager. After the city manager was fired in early March, the same commissioner went into the city clerk's office and told her words to the effect of, "I got one and have two more on my list." In early March, over two months after the original grievances were submitted, I had another employee come into my office and express serious concerns over a telephone call he had just received. The employee told me the same current commissioner had just called him and spoke about an ongoing internal affairs investigation the employee was involved with. The employee informed me that the commissioner told him that some of the members of the Police Command Staff didn't like the employee and wanted to see him demoted or fired. The commissioner said that he would not allow that to happen and he would exert political pressure to not let that occur. The commissioner said that he had discussed the investigation with a current council member and they agreed the employee should only get one week off without pay. At that time, this employee had not been interviewed and no facts were known. The facts stated by the commissioner were false and the pending investigation was completely inappropriate for the commissioner to discuss with a council member or the employee, especially with no knowledge of the investigation. I had the employee write a memo to me stating the facts of the phone call. I sent this memo to the city attorneys, the acting city manager, and the interim HR director as our full-time HR director had resigned because he felt targeted and believed the city council is allowing attacks against management as part of a plan to either terminate or force out the upper management of the city. This discussion of a confidential internal affairs investigation between two city leaders is inexcusable and inappropriate. In the last month and a half, there has been no investigation by the city. This conversation and meddling directly undermined my authority as the Police Chief to properly handle personnel issues and allow the employee due process. I eventually had a meeting with the city attorney, the two original griever's, and the interim HR director regarding these grievances and complaint. In this meeting, the city attorney suggested that we just meet with the commissioner and try to work out our differences. We were told if there was an investigation, it would cost approximately $30,000. The employees said they wanted an investigation due to the continual nature of his comments and attempts to interfere with police operations. The interim HR director also said he believed these grievances had merit and should be investigated. During the week of April 15th, the interim HR director met with the interim city manager to discuss the validity of these complaints. The interim HR director was terminated by the interim city manager. I believe if proper procedures would have been followed to investigate the first two grievances in a timely manner and immediately stop the hostile work environment, the additional issue may not have occurred. The Human Resources Department and the city attorney's office is charged with ensuring that hostility in the workplace be investigated and stopped immediately. In this case, the actions were allowed to continue for an extended period of time, causing further damage to several employees. After a city council election candidate forum during the past election, a current council member said he was the minority and hoped to get his council majority in to get things done. To me, this statement suggests that there was going to be little or no independent thinking taking place by the newly-elected council members, which seems would be a continual violation of the Brown Act. It appears the new council members are being guided by someone who has influence over them. After the election, a current council member's relatives started a countdown on Facebook, starting with 90 days. This person stated that change was coming to the city. This countdown continued at various times on different public postings up until March 5th. On March 5th, the city manager resigned in lieu of termination. My question would be as to how this person would have the information 90 days in advance that this change was going to occur? Was this decision made by the majority of the council outside of open session? Was there a Brown Act violation that occurred? And why was the information shared with a community member prior to the action being taken? On February 28th, 2019, the recently terminated fire chief Larry Whithorn and I attended the grand opening of a business in the West Covina Plaza. During that grand opening, we were approached by a current council member and told that a majority of the council wanted to fire both of us. This council member said he was supportive of us but that we should be careful. After the fire chief and I left, we were standing in the parking lot conversing. The same current council member again began talking with us and again stated the city council majority wanted to fire us. During the hiring process for the interim city manager, I became concerned when I learned that during the interview process, he was asked the question by the city council as to whether he would be willing to fire a department head that was popular in the community. As a 33-year employee of the Police Department, along with being a longtime resident of West Covina, I assume this question was directed towards me. I do not know what the answer was in the interview but now feel it had to be to the This question in an interview setting is inappropriate. At that council meeting on Tuesday, April 2nd, where the city council was going to vote on hiring the interim city manager, prior to the meeting, I introduced myself to him. He said that after the council meeting was over, he wanted to go on a ride-along with the Police Department. Apparently, he had already been told he had the job prior to the vote taking place in open session. The next morning at a department head meeting, the interim city manager focused on the importance of getting the budget solidified, as we were already five weeks behind schedule. He reiterated several times that we needed to make the budget a priority. Later in the day, he met with the Police and Fire Associations at length. During the time period that he was hired and prior to me being terminated, the interim city manager spent less than 30 minutes with me talking about police issues. And in one meeting I had with him, I tried to discuss police litigation and budget. After 20 minutes, he told me the discussion was too intense at this time and he needed to leave to attend a tutorial. Prior to my termination, we had no other discussions about the budget. At no time did he ever discuss leadership, the new direction he wanted to go in, his vision, or whether I had any questions about these items. But he did continue to meet with the Police and Fire Associations. I would like to add that for the 2018-2019 fiscal year, the Police Department is currently within budget due to the cuts that had to be made. On April 22nd, when the interim city manager called me into his office, I was met by him and two city attorneys. He explained he was sorry but decided to go in a different direction for my position. He told me I had lost the confidence of the officers. I asked him if this was his decision or the city councils', and he said it was his. I believe this statement to be an absolute lie. I asked him what the non-sworn employees had said and he said he had not talked to them. I also knew that he had not met with the Police Management Association to get their input. He told me I had done nothing wrong and knew I was committed to the community, but he had decided to go in a different direction. According to the International City Managers Association's Code of Ethics, his conduct does not hold true. Tenant #11 states, "Handle all matters of personnel on the basis of merit so that fairness and impartiality govern a member's decision pertaining to appointments, pay adjustments, promotions, and discipline." Tenant #12 states, "Seek no favor or profit secured by confidential information or by misuse of public time, which is dishonest." As a resident, I would like to know of when the interim city manager played in the Fire Association's golf tournament on Monday, April 15. 13 days after being hired, was his entry fee comped by the Fire Association and was he being paid by the city as a workday? This does not seem to be in line with his directive to make the budget a work priority. Tenant #3 states, "Be dedicated to the highest ideals of honor and integrity in all public and personal relationships in order that the member may merit the respect and confidence of the elected officials, of other officials and employees, and of the public." One of the guidelines for this tenant states, "Members should conduct their official and personal affairs in such a manner as to give the clear impression that they cannot be improperly influenced in the performance of their official duties," which I believe has been done by the unions and the city council. Again, this question about firing the department head in his interview aligns with him being influenced by the promise of employment. According to West Covina Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Division 2, Section 2-151-Q, which provides for the rules of the council-city manager relations, it states, "The city council and its members shall deal with the administration services of the city only through the city manager except for the purposes of inquiry. And neither the city council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinate of the city manager. The city manager shall take his orders and instructions from the city council only when sitting in a duly-held meeting of the city council, and no individual councilman shall give any orders or instructions to the city manager. The city council shall instruct the city manager in matters of policy. No councilman shall in any manner, directly or indirectly, by suggestion or otherwise, attempt to influence or coerce the city manager or any candidate for the position of city managers on matters relating to the appointment, promotion, demotion, or removal of any employee or the award of any purchase order or contract." The interim city manager has made it very clearly once the full-time position of city manager. Based on a current council member telling the past city manager to fire the Police and Fire Chiefs, a current council member telling both me and the fire chief in February that the council majority wanted us fired, and the question asked of the interim city manager in his employment interview of whether he would be willing to fire a department head, to me, in totality, I believe it clearly shows an orchestrated and deliberate intent by the city council to use an unethical pawn to fire me for what I believe is retaliation for reporting a hostile work environment created by a person who is a friend of the councils. The interim city manager is more concerned about appeasing the city council and the unions than he is with acting with integrity and true leadership. If the city council and future city manager continue with firing directors who comply with city mandates approved by the city council, your ability to recruit quality ethical individuals will be nonexistent. At some point, you will realize that you cannot fire your way out of problems you do not want to deal with to save your political careers. I would like to quickly address a couple of comments that were made by the public on this matter on Tuesday, April 30th. A statement was made that when a police chief is hired, they become a political appointee. For me and every police chief I know, we specifically do not become political because we do not serve the city council. We serve the entire community. I believe certain members of this council want a personal police chief who is beholden to them, just like what they want in a city manager. I believe they want to have some say in day-to-day operations even though they have no experience or understanding of police operations. I have refused to allow this to occur and refuse to play political games. It has been said many times on social media and in a comment last week that at a community meeting regarding the homeless, that I stated we do not have a homeless problem. This is inaccurate. As what I did say was that homelessness is not a police issue, that it is a community issue that has been thrust upon the plates, and that homelessness is not a crime. This is the same meeting organized by the same commissioner and another individual where no one from the Police Department was invited to. But yet, when I arrived after hearing about it from a community member, I found that I was on the agenda to speak. Of all of these so-called critics on social media, no one has requested a meeting with me to discuss their issues. I have spoken with countless police chiefs and city managers and they have never heard of an interim city manager firing three department heads in three weeks where no misconduct was alleged. For me, I feel that my professional reputation has been damaged, smeared, and compromised with my peers, subordinates, family, friends, and community members by a termination that was politically motivated against sound principles, codes, and rules which prohibit such conduct. Tonight, I have chosen not to attach specific names to all of these incidents as my intent is not to publicly embarrass individuals. If there is ever a need to supply these names, I would be able to do so. My confidence in the council majority, interim city manager, and city attorney's office to act with truth, integrity, in an ethical manner and allow for a workplace environment free of harassment and cronyism is minimal. In the last year, the city has had three finance directors, two city clerks, two HR directors, two city managers, and now has terminated the Police and Fire Chief. The turnover in these leadership positions is disturbing, to say the least. The men and women of the West Covina Police Department are of the highest caliber. It has been a true honor to have worked with them. I would like to thank the city council for the opportunity to speak in open session tonight. If the fire chief would have been afforded the same opportunity, the public would have heard additional compelling concerns and injustices. I would also like to thank my family, friends, coworkers, and the community for their highest level of support. I have received hundreds of calls, texts, and emails expressing shock of the recent actions and concern for the direction the city is going in.
I'd like to call forward Travis Tibbetts, followed by Elsie Messman, followed by Phil Kaufman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff, and residents. My name is Travis Tibbetts and I'm here tonight representing the Police Management Association. In 2017, the Police Department was in need of a new chief. The department had endured a decade of financial instability and constant change of city leadership to include the Police Chief position. The Police Department suffered some physical and cultural changes affecting overall internal morale and services provided to the community. In an effort to restore the health of the department, members from all ranks sought out Mark Taylor and asked him to apply for the chief's position. For some background, in 2008, the year before Chief Taylor retired, our Police Department employed 127 sworn officers. By 2012, we had 90 sworn officers. By 2012, we had 90 sworn officers. We slowly regained some, but with the last year's mandated $3.1 to $3.2 million in cuts to the police department, we sit at 99 sworn positions. Nationwide deployments and nationwide departments employ 2.4 officers per 1,000 residents. West Covina employs one officer per every 1,000 residents. 1,000, one per 1,000. Based on these numbers, our city is well below this mark, and this affects police services. This leads to frustration in the community and a depletion of morale within the ranks of the police department. Our police department handles 70,000 to 80,000 incidents per year. The men and women of our department have been time and time again asked to do more with less, and the demand for police services increases while the resources get cut. These drastic changes during this time period have led to a growing frustration with our organization affecting morale, opportunities, and the quality of services we are able to provide our residents. Our patrol staffing has been at minimum levels for several years, forcing our employees to work extra shifts and take additional responsibilities, adding to frustration, fatigue, increased officer safety concerns, and quality of life issues. Staffing levels amongst our civilian staff has also been depleted to minimum staffing levels, and our current command structure is the same that was in place in the police department in 1969. Beyond of these cuts, employees groups throughout the city have been without contracts for several years, adding to the negative effect on morale in every department in the city, to include the police department. This is what Chief Taylor was confronted with upon his return. In his time as chief, Mark Taylor was able to add personnel to the police department while staying under his allotted budget. But during the implementation of the 28-2019 fiscal year budget, Chief Taylor was mandated to cut 10% from the police department budget, an approximate $3.1 million. This was the largest budget cut mandate the police department had ever faced in a single budget year, coming at a time where our personnel had already felt the fatigue and frustrations of budget cuts and depleted resource from the previous 10 years. Chief Taylor was forced to make unpopular, tough decisions to meet budget mandates. Chief Taylor knew his decisions were going to be unpopular and believed we would eventually be able to restore these changes once the city financial situation improved. Chief Taylor knew if he did not make the difficult decision, the unpopular decision, the police department would end up in a worse place. This exemplifies true leadership and commitment to the city and the police department. Unfortunately, these decisions ultimately led to his dismissal, and the department will eventually be forced to look for another police chief, taking us through another leadership roller coaster in hopes that the finances of the city will replenish, allowing the new leader to restore services, trust, and morale. As PMA president, speaking on behalf of the PMA, the Police Management Association, we want to thank Mark Taylor for his courage in taking on the challenge as police chief and for his 29-plus years of dedicated service to the city of West Covina and police department. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, staff, and everyone here tonight and at home. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina, and I'm back again. The residents that I have spoken to need to know the whole story behind the firing of our police chief, Mark Taylor. So far, all we've heard is about the homeless situation. I hope there is more to it than this, as we can be possibly looking at a lawsuit, which we don't need. At our last budget meeting, the police took a 10% cut and a shortage of officers at that time. We had 127, now we have apparently 99. That is a lot of manpower lost. As for the homeless, the police have their hands tied in a lot of instances. If you pick someone up late at night, you have to have a room for them at night. Dropping them off in another city is a no-no. I don't think any officer would want to take a homeless person home for the night. We must remember that our police department has over 110-plus residents to keep safe. This is their first priority, as we are the tax-paying residents. There are some questions I have heard lately. Here are some of the questions that I've heard lately. Number one, why is it only the police department's problem? Number two, why is it not the council's problem? Number three, why isn't the staff's problem? Watching the news, there are plenty of cities that have homeless problems. Here's my suggestion. Whoever is in charge of the homeless situation in West Covina should talk to the other cities who have had success, and maybe we could duplicate what they are doing, or get suggestions from West Covina residents and put it on the website, as we have a lot of good minds out there. We could also put some signs in the park, closing the parks at 10 o'clock, and also showing no loitering. My final thought on the police chief and the 110-plus tax-paying resident, it seems to me to be way more important than the few homeless that's causing the problem. I believe we should reinstate the police chief, Mark Taylor, tonight. Thank you.
After next speaker, Phil Kaufman. I'd like to call up James Toma, Brian Jopes, followed by Ray Edmondson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, staff, fellow residents, Chief Taylor. Listening to the chief relate, this litany of events is just plain scary, scary that this is the way our city is now conducting business. It has been a privilege to know Chief Taylor through the tenure of his years as our chief, and I can say three things about him. Chief Taylor understands the law, Chief Taylor respects the law, and Chief Taylor enforces the law. His failure, if any, has been that he has not been swayed by public opinion that is based on emotions and on a misunderstanding of what the law does not allow and of what the law requires. It is a shame that segments of our city's population have taken out their frustrations on various issues such as the homeless issue, police staffing, response time, things of this nature that are beyond his control. Similarly, it's a shame that members of the police department have taken out their frustrations as to contract negotiations, staffing, other issues on the chief. This, to me, is similar to citizens taking out their frustrations about the cost of gasoline on the President of the United States, whether that president is Barack Obama or Donald Trump. It doesn't matter. World petroleum factors, refinery fires influence gasoline costs. The city's revenue situation, deficit budgeting, and these problems have caused problems with staffing, with morale, with all these other issues that have come to the head and have resulted in this action. This action that has made Chief Taylor the target. Don't make him a target. Don't let him be the target. Let him continue doing his job in the exemplary manner in which he has conducted himself throughout his tenure as our police chief.
I'm a former councilman. Mark Taylor came up through the ranks of the West Covina Police Department. He lives in our community. His children have gone to our schools. He was and is a good police officer and a good police chief. When the city hired him, he forewent his pension and he saved the city, by my estimate, about $270,000. Your interim city manager's been here, what, a month? Chief Taylor's been here many, many years in the department, a year and a half as our chief. Now the city manager, the fire chief, the HR director, the finance directors, the interim HR director, now the police chief are all gone. Mr. Wu says he's got his council majority behind him, and he's bringing in his team, as if West Covina were his own personal fiefdom. Public servants have become political pawns. I've heard only a couple criticisms of Chief Taylor, neither which have any merit. The first is that Chief Taylor had said that we have to abide by the laws in our city when it comes to how the city and the police treat the homeless. Yeah, you heard me right. He said we have to abide by the law as a city. I assure you that the courts have made clear that communities can't just roust up people, throw out their property. It's very clear, and the limitations of what cities and police officers can do is very clear. But apparently, some people think that stating facts is a fireable offense. The police chief also said that homelessness isn't unique to West Covina, that it's a societal problem. That's the truth, and people with agendas have purposely twisted his comments out of context and had claimed falsely the chief denied that we need to address homelessness. We obviously do. The second criticism I heard is that Chief Taylor cut police staffing. Let me remind you that the city, due to decisions that were made some 20 years ago, have had to pay about $20 million extra for pension retirements in the last few years. We spend 80% of our general fund budget on public safety. It's higher than any other city in the area. The chief wasn't responsible for those decisions that increased our expenses by $20 million. Some council members, however, would like to deceive people, including some police officers, to think that we can have it all, increase police officers, increase their pay, pay millions to firefighters for their pay and their overtime, and increase retirement pensions without having it have a fiscal impact on our residents. Of course, that's an obvious lie, and a lie that's been promulgated by persons who are sitting here in this chamber. This is about political payback. It's about politicians who view public servants as pawns, or who are just indifferent or don't even understand their ethical obligations as elected officials. It's a poorly kept secret that a sales tax measure is being discussed. Firing the police chief seems to be part of that political strategy to try and get the fire and police unions to put a sales tax on the measure for you. When I was on the council, I supported putting a sales tax measure on the ballot because I know we need police officers. It is the highest priority for our city. You heard the discussion by police management about the need for those officers. I've always said that's our first priority. And yet, some politicians would say, "No, we don't need taxes," and would essentially lie to the public about it. You've all campaigned, I should say, many of you have campaigned saying, "We don't need taxes." But you have no plan. You've been, since your campaign, it's been a year. What is your plan for increasing our police officers? I haven't heard it yet. It's been a year since you started campaigning. What is the plan? There is no plan, and you know it. So your only option is try and get officers or firefighters to put a tax measure on the ballot for you, because you're going to try and deny it because you campaigned for it. Mr. Wu wants his team. He said that you're part of his majority, and that's sure what it looks like from this side of the dice. Thank you.
I'm Brian Jopes, a 30-year resident of West Covina. I had a number of comments prepared for tonight. After Chief Taylor spoke, I threw them away. My first reaction to what I heard is WTF. My second reaction is I wonder if this is going to be one of those special city council meetings where we have technical difficulties with the videotape. I'm going to keep my comments short, because I am not in a mood to say, well, I am in the mood. I'm just going to contain it. Chief Taylor, thank you very much for doing your hearing publicly. Thank you for your candor, and thank you most of all for three decades of public service to the residents of West Covina. I can assure you, and other residents can assure you, the impacts of what you've said tonight will be meaningful. One message is very clear across everything that Chief Taylor said. If you're a resident here and you're upset, don't take that information to the city attorney. Don't take it to the city manager, and don't take it to the city council. Take it outside of the city. Take it to the state. Take it to the county of Los Angeles. Take it to the federal government. Take it anywhere you can, along with this videotape. Then, and maybe then, there'll be some sort of reaction amongst this city council, some sort of meaningful form of integrity from the majority of this city council. I'm disgusted by what I heard.
After our next speaker, Brian Jopes, I'd like to call up Bill Robinson, Minerva Avila, and Frederick Sykes. After Ray.
Good evening, Council. Chief Taylor, my name is Ray Edmondson, 30-year resident of West Covina. I'm kind of like Brian in that I walked in with some statements prepared, and then I kind of expected some of what he said. What seemed to have happened was pretty transparent, but I had no idea of the depth of problems. I thought it was mostly shallow and some really transparent political moves. Like, I have freshmen that would be embarrassed by the poorness that you hid this. But hearing all that is, I don't know what to do now. Like, clearly, there needs to be some sort of investigation. Like Brian said, there needs to be, we need to go outside of this and figure out what happened, because if these accusations are true, you are all done. Thank you.
My name is Minerva Avila, and I'm a West Covina resident. My family lives here. My children go to school here in West Covina, and both my children play sports here. We love this community, but unfortunately, you council members are making it quite difficult to live here. I will discuss two points, my support for Chief Taylor and the circumstances behind the recent firings. First, as you obviously know, Chief Taylor, like myself, calls this city home. He has lived here, he has raised his family here, he has worked here. He is a productive citizen of our community, your constituent. He has, on a personal and professional level, personal and professional level, personal, the best interest of West Covina in mind, right? It's his home. He lives here. He goes beyond his call of duty and participates in our local activities on his own time because he lives here. He has done no wrong to the city. He's done what he could, what he can do based on the budget, the law, the circumstances. He is a good man. We are honored to have Chief Taylor, someone from our community, serve as our police chief. Then why would you fire him? So my second point, the circumstances behind his firing, and it connects to all the other recent firings as well. The reason you want to replace him has nothing to do with his ability to do a good job. On the contrary, you are looking for someone to do your dirty work. You are looking to replace individuals in these high-ranking positions with people you can control and manipulate, kind of like the new city manager. You are looking for people who will be loyal to you and who will carry out your politically motivated requests, someone like the new city manager, who has apparently experience in that department. So let's be clear that this firing is about your greed and not about the chief's performance. And I'm looking at you, Councilman Wu, since you claim to be the new sheriff in town. You're kind of loose with your lips, so word gets around. You're not too shy even to speak to a reporter about it, so. So it turns out that you are the ones doing a bad job, not the chief. You are the ones being dishonest. You want to bribe the Police Officer and Firefighters Association with a fire, with training facilities up on toxic land. You're the ones exhibiting untrustworthy behavior. You're firing all the good people. You're the greedy ones, expanding your hiring power. You want more control. You want more power. Essentially, what you're doing is planting the seeds of corruption. Essentially, what you're doing is planting the seeds of corruption. I hope West Covina residents wake up and see what this is truly about. It's not about the chief. It's your greedy grab for more power. If I haven't stated the obvious, yes, I am upset. And so are many, many people who can't be here tonight because it is late, and many of us are parents and have little ones in our PJs. Some of us brought them, and they're in the back. They're state testing, by the way, and so we have to run home and go to sleep. But please know that there are a lot of people that are upset. And those who are unaware will be aware, because we will be telling them. Thank you.
The chief mentioned retaliation and corruption. For me, I believe the chief, as, you know, I'm not on a jury, but I believe the chief. I read in the newspaper about the council choosing the path of self-destruction. You folks are all newbies. None of you have municipal government experience. All five of you have no experience. Well, let me share my ignorance with you. The problems that the city has right now, the staff didn't do it. The staff follows the direction of the city council to the city manager, and the city manager runs the staff. Firing city staff doesn't do anything. They didn't create all the problems that the city has. It's past city councils, past policymakers. Those, the problems that the city now has are due to decades of other city councils. I mean, it looks outrageous to the public to see staff people being fired and all this. I mean, it's corruption and retaliation. It's just obvious to me. So just because I read, you know, that the city has chosen the path of self-destruction, it sure looks like that. But I mentioned at a council meeting about a month ago, I got a call out of Texas. And I have the phone number because I tracked down that company, and I mentioned it at this, I mean, the police and fire are doing something right after the election, and they have the conversation on a tape. They have Bill Robinson answering their questions for 20 minutes. And I mentioned that. And I'll give you the phone number. You know, things are going around, I mean, the city council is trying to jury-rig things to raise a sales tax, and, "Oh, we didn't do it. It was the police and the fire association that did it." You guys are policymakers, and you guys were elected to make policy, not shake up the staff. I mean, this is not Mexico. This is not a third-world country yet. I mean, what I've seen so far, I think one, a certain councilman should just not wait for the recall, just resign. I mean, I hate to bring up Singpoli and, you know, building the Roundup Hotel on a toxic dump. But the direction you guys are doing is just obviously, I mean, we need the State Attorney General's office, we need the State Controller's office to fix this, because, you know, having an emperor on the council and know-nothings that are just, you know, following on because he made a deal, "We're going to run the city." Well, we're not happy with the way you guys are running the city. So quit firing staff.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, members of the city council, city staff, and everyone in the audience. I'm Frederick Sykes, 41-year resident of West Covina. I'm also a retired deputy sheriff and the former mayor of this city. And what brings me out so late tonight, it's already been said, and it's very powerful, it's sad and concerning. And there are some questions that I hope you think about and try to put in good order, because what we heard in the paper about how they were fired, the chiefs were fired and so forth, because of a change of direction, that reason seems to be vague and unfair. So it begs to question, was there a written change of direction for the chiefs? Was there a new policy and procedure developed with the chiefs? Was there research and discussion about the new direction with the chiefs? And, most importantly, are there built-in compliances with the current laws and also the current case laws? And in particular, as it's related to our problems with homelessness and the vagrants. I know from personal experience that public service is not easy, and it's a major personal sacrifice, especially to be out front with such limited resources as our chief of police was put in. So to the chief, I say thank you, and I hope that everyone that's listening gets involved and steps up to put things in order. Thank you.
I'd like to call up Laura Viara, Pete Gallardo, followed by Deanna Castanueva.
Good evening, council. I, too, kind of scrapped my comments and started fresh, so I hope this comes out okay. The budget that our police chief directed and managed obviously was not his budget. It was something that was given to him. And he was given the directive, and he met the directive, from what I'm hearing this evening. And of course, we as residents don't want taxes raised, I mean, nobody does, but we also want the benefit of a fully-staffed police force, and sometimes that costs money. We all have our own household bills, and we have to function within a certain budget, and if we have to raise taxes in order to meet those from time to time, I guess that is the case. Chief Taylor made some tough decisions. He achieved his budget. Listening to him this evening, and I heard his thoughts and his determination, being some type of retaliation or even hostile work environment, it surprised me. I am a senior HR director. I am also a certified human resources professional, and I hope that is not the case. I've not met our interim city manager. Hi. And I'm certain you wouldn't have hired him if he wasn't really great at what he does. I'm very confident in that. But I understand our city must be ran whether we have a regularly-staffed city manager, whether we have an interim city manager and led a proper way. I am just shocked that his vision for leadership in three weeks' time would come to the termination of these positions. It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem right in any sense of the word as far as a HR or risk manager or risk director like I am. It leaves me questioning, how would the interim city manager be able to come up with these decisions in a short time? Was there any time for proper counseling? It doesn't seem like there would have been. How would Mr. Taylor even have understood the new direction warranted of him or expected of him in that time? I was at the meeting where Chief Taylor expressed homelessness and mentioned that it was not a crime, and he's right, it's not. It's a serious social issue. It's not something he created. It's something that's been thrust upon our city, something that's been thrust upon our state. And his job is to direct and to enforce the laws. He didn't make them. We count on him as our police chief to lead the department, to enforce the law, and to mitigate risk for our city and for the residents, and keep us safe primarily. Chief Taylor didn't create homelessness. He didn't create our budget issues, and he does have some major community support here, as I've seen this evening. Based on what I've heard, I hope that you reconsider and you reinstate Chief Mark Taylor. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, West Covina residents, council city staff. My name is Pete Gallardo. I've, like some of you in the audience, and one lady pointed out, I've been a longtime resident as well. I was born and raised here in West Covina, literally, and Queen of the Valley. And when I say raised, I went to school here. My children go to school here. My family still lives here. And in addition to that, I was raised within this organization. I came over here in 2000, and obviously, I've been here since, and I've had the opportunity to work several different assignments, and I've worked with Chief Taylor, I've worked with many in the audience, many of the command staff here. And I got to say that we did, as an association, of which I'm a board member, and I'm speaking on their behalf, we had something prepared, but something that has been a constant in West Covina P D, or something that I've known, was we are a family, and I believe that whole heartedly, because when we're out there, we're doing a job. We are protecting. That's our job, is to serve and protect, and we are all playing on the same team. However, like a family, everybody has some laundry, right? They've got some things that maybe they don't want aired out, and I'm surprised that some of those things were brought up, and I think that we were getting off-topic and off-task, but I just want to make it clear that the Police Management Association is not speaking on the Police Officers Association's behalf. So when it comes to contract, and when it comes to things that were, that we possibly were concerned about or upset about, we didn't want to discuss any of that. In fact, throughout this whole process, we wanted to remain professional. We wanted to keep things out of the paper. It was very limited, our interaction with the media or with press. We didn't want to do it, right? Because again, we're a family. It's not what we're about. So on behalf of the West Covina Police Officers Association, I want to let you know that we fully support you, the city council, and the decision of the city manager to move our department in a new direction. Our association, as I've mentioned before, has and will remain respectful and professional throughout this process, and intend on cooperating in a manner befitting our city and its residents. We would like to thank Chief Taylor for his many years of service, and we wish him well in his future endeavors. Our current position is to maintain and hopefully increase our level of service to the community and to its residents, as they are our highest priority. This can only be accomplished through the already stalwart efforts of our men and women who genuinely wish to maintain and increase our already excellent standard of cooperation with the residents of this great city. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deanne Castorina. I'm a 25-year resident of this city, and for the last two years, I've had the honor of being the deputy in charge of the West Covina District Attorney's Office at the courthouse right through the parking lot. This is my third stint as a deputy district attorney in that particular courthouse, so I've been around for a while. I knew Chief Taylor as an officer, I knew him as a detective, and I was thrilled when he was chosen to come back and lead this department as a chief. He's involved in the community, as many of you have heard, but I'll share just a couple of experiences I've had since he's come back as chief. I teach a class at Vine Elementary School, and I've seen Chief Taylor over there several times in the last few months, teaching a class which I asked him to participate in, attending a memorial for a fallen teacher. He's also involved in many of the other schools, including South Hills High School, and our paths have crossed at many, many community events. I want to underscore also, several of the speakers tonight spoke about homelessness. This is a particular issue that I know a lot about, as I am a legal professional. Homelessness is not the job of the police department to solve, and it's not the failure of Chief Taylor or the police department to enforce the laws, but the failure and the change in the laws themselves. A recent Supreme Court case has made it illegal to enforce non-camping laws in cities and parks all over this state. We all know about jail overcrowding, right? That's been around for a long time. But in addition to jail overcrowding, we currently have statutes on the book that allow people to get diverted for drug offenses over and over and over again. The California Legislature recently instituted a mental health diversion statute, and many, many people who are drug addicts have, create mental illness, or are self-medicating themselves because they have mental illnesses and end up homeless, and it is virtually impossible to keep those folks in custody. Furthermore, laws that we think, based on the Webster's Dictionary, may be able to address the homelessness issues, for example trespassing, are not what you think of from the Webster's Dictionary. The legal definition of trespassing and property that is open to the public requires that individual to have a prior criminal conviction at that location before he or she can be arrested and prosecuted and incarcerated. So it is not the fault of Chief Taylor or the police department that homelessness is increasing in our community. It's increasing everywhere, and if anyone on the council is interested, I've created a presentation on this very issue. I've given it several times in the city already, and I would be happy to share it with you if you'd like to learn more about the law. I want to echo that Chief Taylor...
Please, please hold it down. Thank you.
...is genuinely concerned about the welfare of the residents of this community, as several other speakers tonight have said. But I also want you to know that he is genuinely concerned about the issues that the district attorney's office faces, and we have worked together closely in the last year and a half or so that he's been leading the West Covina Police Department. I am honored to work daily with the men and women of the West Covina Police Department. They do a phenomenal job, considering the budget cuts that they faced, as Lieutenant Travis Tibbetts explained to you early. And I want to thank Chief Taylor for his dedication and concern to the residents of this community, to enforcing the laws ethically and honestly, and I hope that you'll reinstate him. Thank you for your time.
Our final two speakers tonight are Lyndon Nguyen and David Williams.
I love your smile, Tony. I love the fact that you're smiling at the firing of Chief Taylor. I'm here to support him. My son knows who he is, because he makes an effort to attend our school functions, and I am a part of a group of moms called Moms That Love West Covina. We all brought our kids here during state testing to show our support for Chief Taylor. This whole time, Tony, you are the only one, you've said it in newspapers, or to the Tribune. Go ahead, roll your eyes. We all know you're the main resource. Let me, I had my entire family vote for you, a family that's been in West Covina for 42 years. I, too, am a product of West Covina, born at Queen of the Valley. I am very disappointed that you guys made this decision and gave him two days. Had me... meeting on the day that Portos did their grand opening to oversee it. Really, ver- bravo to you guys. I am here to support Chief Taylor, as well as everybody in this room, and I hope that you guys do reinstate him.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll say this. I didn't necessarily come here, well, I didn't come here expecting to hear some of the things that I heard tonight. I can honestly say that I'm a bit disturbed with the things that I've heard, but to maintain some level of impartiality, because I'll admit that I haven't felt like I've done enough research to really sit here and voice an opinion one way or the other, but I can honestly say that I don't like what I'm hearing. I'm a 20-year resident of Pa- of, uh, I was gonna say Pasadena. Jesus, I don't even know where I'm at. I'm a 20-year resident of West Covina. What does that mean? That means that if this were 20 years ago and I were standing here, I'd have hair. Okay? But I've just noticed that in the, uh, in, in listening to what a lot of the folks have said prior hand, I have come up here, when I addressed the council last year, I made it very clear that my main concern is the treatment of our police department. Now, don't, don't intertwine this with the things that have transpired with the fire chief and with the police chief. I'm talking about our officers that go out there and risk their lives every day. I am shocked at the fact that we're at 99 police officers, down from 120-plus, and the last time I checked, that with a reduction of police personnel, you know what I would expect? A reduction in taxes. But somewhere along the line, I don't see a reduction in taxes, but I sure as hell see a reduction in our police personnel, which isn't fair to me, and it's not fair to any of these folks that are in this room. But it doesn't stop there. It's also not fair to the police officers and the firemen who are already in an at-risk job. We are now putting them out there minus the personnel that they would need when they need help. Being in a city, uh, being in the county of Los Angeles, there's 88 cities in this county. So we have the opportunity to look at how 87 other cities run their city, some good, some not-so-good. Predictable is preventable. We are going down a path, and I'm not quoting what was in the newspaper, we're going down the path of destruction by way of public safety that I'm concerned about. I am not happy that our police personnel has gone three years without a contract, and I'm not here to point fingers and say, well, it's this person's fault, it's that person's fault. Because as quickly as we can point the finger and try to blame either the PMA or the POA or the council, when you point one finger out, three fingers point back at you. If there is a political ballgame being played here, and I said if, I will not come up here and make allegations against any of you. If there's a political ballgame being played, consider me the referee and I'm putting it to a stop. It has to stop somewhere. I'm tired of it. I am sick and tired of it. And if I have to walk door-to-door, and my councilperson knows what I'm willing to do, if I have to walk door-to-door to fill these chambers every two weeks that we have a meeting to make it very clear that our expectations are very high of all of you, our expectations are high of this gentleman right here, our expectations are high of our city attorney, and we will get what we want. If we don't get what we want, well then sadly, the door opens in both directions in this city. Stop playing games with our police department. Stop playing games with our safety. Make the right decisions that you need to make with regards to our personnel. That should be priority, and we need you to make that happen, and it needs to happen yesterday. Thank you for your time.
We have one additional speaker card. I'd like to call up Norman Owashi.
I'm a emergency physician, and I've been a queen of the valley for 36 years. And I've known Mark Taylor for at least 20 years. He's always, um, you know, some of the guys would say he's like old-school, you know? He's honorable. He's, um, ethical, and he's willing to make the hard decisions. But most of all, he cares. He cares about the city, cares about his men. So I guess my basic question is, you know, why, why are you looking for a new direction? You know, are you looking away from somebody who is, is giving his whole career to the city? And, you know, so that really makes you think that is something else, that, you know, that is not honorable and is very slimy.
Well, that was the last card. If there's anybody else like to speak, I see our former mayor Ben Wong would like to speak. Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I had not filled out a card because I wasn't sure I was gonna speak, but I did want to at least come up here and say thank you to Mark Taylor for his service and commitment to this community. And I'm a little dismayed, more than a little dismayed. I understand the job the city attorney has to do, and it's a job that David Carney, who I had the pleasure of working closely with when I was at the Industry Manufacturers Council and he was the city manager in La Puente, they have a job to do. That job comes because of the direction they get from this council. And so it's a little dismaying to me that he's directed you, and I understand the reasons why, that you're not here to ask any questions, because you've got the potential for litigation. And yet, in an effort of transparency to the chief, the fact that you don't ask questions makes it pretty clear your minds are made up. Because I'm sure he probably said some things tonight that you didn't know. Certainly things that we didn't know in the audience. And the fact that this council chooses not to ask questions, in part because the city attorney says you shouldn't, many of you are very good at taking direction. I think it's really a shame that the chief doesn't get the opportunity at a fair hearing. At a minimum, I would hope that this council delays a decision to affirm the decision of the city manager. And honestly, I think we all know it wasn't his decision. It was a direction given by a majority of this council. And I think the hardest thing, and I've been in your seats before, the hardest thing to do, particularly if you're a relatively new council member, is to have the courage to say you made a mistake. I think you've made a mistake. Obviously, you don't think you have, but I would hope you would think long and hard, and I hope it, you think long and hard beyond tonight, before you make the decision to affirm this decision to fire the chief. Because I don't know how much information you had. I don't know who you were talking to. Certainly, the kinds of things that I'm hearing from the chief that took place, I think were improper. Whether the council was involved in it or not, I don't know. But it's pretty clear to me that, I think I know what's gonna happen here tonight. I'm not naive, I'm not stupid. But I think it's a really, a shame for this community. I, I think a good man like Mark Taylor, uh, his reputation has been damaged by it. You know, I think about what happened in our neighboring city of La Puente, I mean, in Baldwin Park, remember? Where the city council took it upon themselves to fire a police chief a few years ago. That police chief wanted $7 million verdict for an improper firing. So I would ask this council to carefully consider the steps you're gonna take next, because I think it's wrong.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Paul Akamari. I'm a former resident of West Covina. I spent 32 years at this police department. I retired as assistant chief. I came back for a nine-month period and served as interim chief before Chief Faulkner took over. And I've addressed the council before, not under the these circumstances, and this is really difficult for me because, you know, we always try to support the council, but then there's times when, when I have to speak my mind and tell you exactly how I feel. And, and mayor, I'd like to address, address most of this just directly to you, since, since you are the head of this council right now. What I'd like everybody to know is that I've known Mark Taylor for 35 years, and he is one of the most honorable people that I've ever met. This is a man of integrity, a man who's given his life to this department. And when there's political situations and he said and she said, it's always, it's so difficult for the people of the community to know what really happened, right? I can tell you that you can trust this man, and I can tell you that based on my experience, that what he's telling you is the truth. So mayor, I believe your heart is in the right place. I really do. I'm asking you to call the L.A. County District Attorney's Office and conduct a political corruption investigation on this council.
Is there anyone else that would like, before I close the public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to close the public comment. And do we have any motions or anything that's been made? Or what we?
I want to make a motion to uphold the, okay, interim city manager regarding the termination of our chief, uh, Mark Taylor. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is that vocal?
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
No.
Seeing that, I guess that is the only item we had on here, so I guess we are adjourned.